All right, at seven o'clock, I'd like to call the meeting into order. Please rise for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, just make a note that Harry and Don are gone tonight. All business, approval of minutes, the regular meeting minutes of April 3rd, 2025, were provided for review, so I need a motion to approve the regular meeting minutes of April 3rd, 2025, as presented.
So moved.
Second.
Have a motion and a second, call and roll.
Mr. Clemens?
Yes.
Mr. Gardner?
Yes.
Mr. Kirby?
Yes.
Mr. Kowalowski?
Yes.
Mr. Garvey?
Yes.
Mr. Robinson?
Yes.
Motion passed. Item number two is ordinance 1128, an ordinance granting a change of zoning. A motion to amend Lansing zoning map was included on the March 20th, 2025 agenda. After a vote was conducted, staff learned of an error in the voting procedure, the error related to the vote and counting of said mayor. The mayor was precluded from voting and tabulating his erroneous vote in the total count resulting in the motion's failure. Attorney General opinion 9241 determined that the mayor does not vote in a mayor council form of government on valid protest petitions. The amendment to the zoning map had a valid protest, which requires a supermajority 6-2 vote for approval, but the procedural error, the motion would have passed. The motion is not to review the merits or accept new information or evidence of the previous zoning application, but rather to re-tabulate the vote from March 20th, 25th, meeting the accordance with the Attorney General's opinion 9241. So I need a motion to correct the error of including the mayor's vote on March 20th, 25th, to amend Lansing zoning map and re-tabulate the original vote from the governing body per Attorney General 92 point, or 92-41, resulting in a 6-2 supermajority vote, approving the ordinance number 1128.
So moved.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Call and roll.
Mr. Clemens?
Yes.
Mr. Gardner?
Yes.
Mr. Kirby?
Yes.
Mr. Kowalowski?
Yes.
Mr. Garvey?
Yes.
Mr. Robinson?
Yes.
Motion passed. Audience participation, is there anyone in the audience who would like to address the council on an item that is not on the agenda? Okay. Going to new business, public hearing, Riverbend Heights RHID adoption resolution. At Astra Development LLC requests the establishment of a 20-year RHID to support construction of Riverbend Heights subdivision, a 412-lot, single-family development in Lansing. By using RHID tool, infrastructure costs will partially be financed through the future property tax increment, rather than special assessments, reducing upfront cost burdens for the homeowners. So I need a motion to open the public hearing on this item.
So moved. Second.
Call and roll.
Mr. Clemens?
Yes.
Mr. Gardner?
Yes.
Mr. Kirby?
Yes.
Mr. Kowalowski?
Yes.
Mr. Garvey?
Yes.
Mr. Robinson?
Yes.
Okay, the public hearing is now open. Before, we have public comments, though, I just want to mention to the audience and let you know that this item will be tabled, and an upcoming motion will be made to continue the public hearing to the 1 May council meeting. That said, you can either speak tonight on behalf of what you want to say on this item, or you can wait until 1 May, either one is fine. So I'm sure if you're here tonight, you might want to just speak, but if you want to hold off until the 1 May, that's up to you. Good evening, Tom.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. I am Tom Diles. I don't vote in Lansing, but I want to thank you all for allowing me at least to bring my opinion to Lansing. And what I'd like to do is a short presentation to provide some context and a perspective on what's happening out off of McIntyre Road. I live at 12500 Noelwood Drive, which is at the far eastern end of McIntyre, right at the four-way stop sign that is so infamous or famous, or whatever it is there, just south of that. Now, this meeting tonight was only to consider the RHID proposal, but for context, from the perspective of us that live out there in Delaware Township, there are three tracks being proposed for business and light industrial higher-density residential development. Riverbend Heights was recently annexed and is proposed solely as high-density residential subdivision. Now, the original RHID proposal was 100% abatement to develop over a 20-year period to offset infrastructure costs. The modification recently has been made to reflect an 80/20 split in the abatement. The 100% abatement, while it did not impact the 20 mil state levy funding schools, absorbed 7.5 million of USDs money, 7.44 of county, and 8.3 million from Lansing totaling some 23.3 million through 2042. At 80/20, it still incurred significant costs, being 18.6 million. And this begs the question, what's the value in surrendering some 20 million in tax revenue? What is it that the taxpayers are buying? Building the three parcels, Delaware Ridge, 1,721 units, including senior living, Epic Estates, 342, and Riverbend Heights, and, Mr. Mayor, you said 412, our count was 417, but I'm not here to quibble. Maybe Mr. Clemens and I can quibble later or something.
Be glad to.
So if you build those out to the proposed plan, that yields just short of 2,500 housing units. The first two, Delaware Ridge and Epic Estates, will construct over 2,050 units with no tax abatement sought by the developers. Once again, what are we buying? 20 million bucks is a lot of money. Riverbend Heights presents several inconsistencies with the recent housing Lansing study recommendations, and we can delve into those at some length if we're going to table this tonight, but I'm not an expert on it, and I haven't studied it. It's a good study, it's a good piece of reasoning, and I don't disagree with the presentation Mr. Clemens made to the Board of County Commissioners. Lansing has to grow. I guess that means I'm out of time, huh? All I would say to close out is prudent planning militates caution in funding development projects. Development is to be encouraged, but at an affordable cost. The RHID designation, on the other hand, sucks away resources that may well prove critical mid to long term, and thus limits the city's ability to meet the needs of its citizens. Thank you very much for your time, gentlemen.
All right, thanks, Tom.
I'll buy the coffee, Tom.
I think he had the timer on like three minutes, you know? Okay. Just want to make sure that came quick. All right.
Good evening, Lisa Holleran, 13382 McIntyre. I won't go over the numbers he just did, but I will say that as a resident, a rural resident of that area, I'm opposed of these developments. I believe that Delaware Ridge, Epic Estates, and Riverbend Heights, with the proposed numbers that they include on residential units, will propose a growth problem for our school district and for the school-aged population, will put a strain on the USD 469 capacity and force renovation and potential construction. I would also ask you to please consider what happens if any of these developments, and especially under the RHID, they do not meet the, the developer does not meet the requirements or files bankruptcy during this process, and then what happens to your interest in that? So I thank you for your time.
All right, thank you.
Good evening, gentlemen. My name's Kirsten Workman. I live in the neighborhood behind Lansing Sonic over Stonecrest, I think is what it's called. I'm here tonight to talk to you about public schools and public trust. I'm very disappointed there was no joint work session between the city and the district. I'm not saying you didn't attempt to do that, but I sure wish the council and the Board of Education could have met. I first learned about the RHID on March 15th, when a constituent asked me to explain why the BOE felt the impact to the district would be, quote, "neutral." That constituent was quoting a message from her city council member, which stated that the, according to her, quote, "impact to the schools should remain neutral or only grow slightly," and that the number of out-of-district students would be reduced to offset the growth from the new neighborhood, end quote. Before you vote on this issue, I need you to understand how wrong that statement is for two reasons. First, out-of-district students can't simply be bumped to make room for others if the city grows. State statute and local district policy establish that, once accepted, students have the right to continue in their new home district year after year, as long as they remain in good standing. I've brought copies of that for you to review, and the second reason is the only way the impact that the school district, to the school district, would be neutral is if no children from that neighborhood enroll in the schools. I don't know whether all of you believe in God or follow Him, but I do know some of you do. I'll remind you of Proverbs 3, verse 5, "Trust the Lord with all your heart and lean not on your own understanding." I believe that means trust in God, but it doesn't mean trust in everyone else's understanding, and you all answer to the public. We can talk money all day long, but you can be sure that all of this increased enrollment will generate more money per student talk is a deceptive shell game. I don't have the time allotment to prove that to you here, but I believe you must know that that's simply not a truthful picture. I didn't expect there to be many children here tonight, so I asked this lovely little girl to stand in for all of the USD 469 students that we have, so you'd have a visual reminder of who you are asking to pay for this neighborhood. The school district's taxing authority exists because the people of Lansing consent to it, and that money is levied for the purpose of educating our children. Quite frankly, I'm shocked and disappointed in our legislature, our state legislature, for allowing this program to be law. I don't think it should be legal, but that doesn't, just because it's legal, doesn't make it right. If you approve of asking the school district to take its funny, its mu, funding, funny, it's funny money, it's funding, if you approve of asking the school district to take its funding and funnel it into the city infrastructure, then you are voting to defund public education and quite literally throw our students' money into the sewers. I may be in the minority, but I don't believe it's your job to grow the city or ensure affordable housing. That's the job of the people who live here, and I think people do a better job of helping their neighbors when it's a choice and not a levy. I just need maybe another minute, if that's okay?
Yeah.
Thank you. I think people do a better job of helping their neighbors when it's a choice and not a levy. Please consider how much socialism you are comfortable thrusting upon Lansing. One last point before I leave, someone I know asked me whether residents of this new neighborhood would be eligible to run for city council and then consequently potentially vote to increase mill levies from which they themselves would be exempt. I believe the answer to that question would be yes, so please vote no. And I'd like, if it's okay, to give you a copy of our USD 469 policy about continuing enrollment for out-of-district students and the state statute that it's rooted in. Can I pass that to you?
You can give that to the city clerk.
Yes, give it to the clerk.
Yeah. She'll do it.
Right here.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Pat Melvin, 13438 McIntyre Road. The city recently used significant taxpayer and grant money to install the McIntyre Sewers Project, a project that benefited essentially developers. And now the city is willing to give up millions more in RHID tax abatement incentives, incentives to the developer over a period of 20 years. This does not sound like good financial stewardship. The tri-party annexation agreement states, whereas city desires to annex the property and to ensure that the development of the property is compatible with surrounding land uses. Not really true. Small lot development is not compatible with the surrounding agricultural land uses. Whereas this annexation is anticipated to provide significant benefits to the city, it might otherwise be unattainable, increasing the vitality of the city's economy and expanding the local tax base. Not really true. People living in this subdivision will shop at Walmart, Dylan's, and Home Depot, all located in Leavenworth. And Lansing won't see the full amount of the tax revenue until the 20-year life of the RHID is over.
All right, thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to speak tonight?
Good evening.
Good evening.
Scott Tenner, 13697 McIntyre Road. I'm right next door to this proposed development, proposed RHID. Recommend that the city not approve the RHID. The city will lose roughly 8 million, the county 7 and 1/2 million, the school district 7 and 1/2 million, or more in tax revenue. For future needs, the city, county, and school will need to choose between either reducing services, forego improvements, or increase taxes. Reduced services and additional taxes will be borne by the rest of the residents in the city and county. The developer will pass along the lower infrastructure cost to the homebuyers in the way of lower home prices within the development. This amounts to nothing more than a housing subsidy to those homebuyers. I believe in giving up, giving a hand up to those truly in need, but the proposed homebuyers in this development, with home prices ranging between $3,000 and $400,000, are not needy. There is no reason for residents of the city and county outside of the RHID to be providing a handout to those homebuyers. Residents in the rest of the city and county should not be expected to subsidize the residents within the RHID for the next 20 years. All residents should bear their burden to support the city and county services. Again, I recommend that the city not approve the RHID. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Julia Erwin. I live at 24282266th Street, and I have a couple of questions. Number one is, how, so currently, I live in a lower crime area, and still, in the last month, my car was broken into in my own driveway where we have security cameras, we have a light on, and in our own driveway, it was already broken into, and that's without bringing in all of these extra people. And so I'm not a fan of this. I don't, I don't think this is something that we should do. The other thing is, if you go ahead with it, I've heard that you have to have, each city has its own allotment of stoplights, and what are we going to do if you guys are at your own, if you're at your allotment of stoplights? We can't, you know, McIntyre has to have one. If you're putting that many more people in there, there has to be a new stoplight there, and probably Gilman and some of the others. What are you going to do about that? And then also, if you're putting in apartments, Lansing doesn't have a fire truck that has a ladder, you know, it doesn't have a ladder truck. Do we have a truck that's big enough that can reach the top of the apartment buildings? Are we going to have to invest in more equipment to keep the people of the city safe? Those are, those are my questions for you all to think of. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. John Redden, 24170131st Street, Leavenworth County. Just for the record, I, I just want to mention that, okay, with this 80/20 split of the RHID funding, the, Lansing will gain, over the 20 years, 1.65 million dollars. And, but Lansing will also forego 6.6 million dollars. So just something to consider. But what I wanted to do tonight mainly is to just go through the RHID resolution document. Now, the city of Lansing must demonstrate to the Kansas Department of Commerce that a shortage of quality housing exists and will continue to persist. A housing needs analysis was developed in 2023 for the city of Lansing, which recommended the construction of 560 housing units of various types through the end of the decade. The housing needs analysis was finalized before the Riverbend Heights, Delaware Ridge, and Epic Estates projects were being contemplated. The current RHID resolution document states in section three, and I quote, "The governing body hereby finds and determines that the shortage of quality housing can be expected to persist, and that additional financial incentives are necessary in order to encourage the private sector to construct or renovate housing in the city," end quote. Is, is this statement really true? Because we all know that Delaware Ridge and Epic Estates, those projects are all in play, as I can show you, and as we voted tonight on Delaware State, so. So I just recommend, just point out to Epic Estates, Delaware Ridge, and thank you, and yeah, Riverbend Heights. So with, with all these development right around the corner, you really can't say that there's a persistent shortage of housing. That statement is no longer correct, and if, so, but if Lansing is going to shut down Delaware Ridge and Epic Estates, then that would be a true statement. But why would you want to do that? Because those two projects are not RHID projects, they're not going to be diverting any tax revenue away from Lansing. It's only Riverbend Heights. You know, may I have some more time? I have some things to cover.
Yeah, I'll give you two more minutes, but.
Okay.
I mean, I know most of the council have heard.
All right, I, I.
And I, I mean, I appreciate it. I'm just giving you more, a little more time.
Okay. All right, so, thank you, Rebecca, that's okay. From our perspective, Riverbend Heights is the project that is least justifiable of the three, because it leans on the RHID that would deny the city, the school board, and the county 80% of the tax revenue from the Riverbend Heights project for 20 years. For the city, that tax denial amounts to 6.6 million. 20 years is a long time for money, a long period of time, and many of us here, probably myself, won't be here to live to see the full amount of the tax revenue coming out of Riverbend Heights. In other words, what good are Riverbend roofs if, if you lose about 80% of the tax revenue? Okay. Continuing, the RHID resolution in Exhibit A, page six, states, quote, "That housing needs analysis indicated Lansing needs 168 conventional single-family homes, 168 small lot homes, for a total of 360, 336 units. The Riverbend Heights project addresses both of these unit types," end quote. That's not quite true, because the Riverbend Heights project developer is proposing 417 units, and they're all small yacht lot units. There's no conventional houses whatsoever in Riverbend Heights, and the housing needs analysis recommended five houses per acre, but, but this developer on Riverbend Heights is planning seven houses per acre. Okay. All right. It's noted, and this is important, that of the 560 housing types identified in the housing needs analysis, all of them can be accommodated easily at Delaware Ridge and Epic Estates, and they won't be diverting tax revenue. Okay, the RHID resolution on Exhibit A, page seven, states, quote, "Students living in the RHID would attend Riverbend Heights, which will experience an increase in the number of students." Can I just finish this section, sir? Students attending Riverbend Heights, students attending Riverbend Heights, this is a typo, right? Who, who, who wrote this? Is this a new school, Riverbend Heights? And, and what's the tax revenue going to fund Riverbend Heights School? It's right, this is right in your RHID resolution document. Somebody's proofed this, right? All right. I guess I'll continue these other sections when we meet next, because I've run out of time, and I appreciate your allowing me a few more minutes. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. Paul Cromer, 23916131st Street, Leavenworth County. I would like to take this time to clear up any confusions or potential misunderstandings. There's a lot of chatter on social media, and a lot of figures are being thrown around. One even said that this RHID would balance the national budget. I know that this is hard to, I know that this is hard to know what the truth is with all this chatter going on out there. On Wednesday morning, I watched as an individual student gave public comment to the Leavenworth B O C C. According to their truth statement, which was concerning the RHID project at River Heights bends, among all the figures that were being presented that morning, one figure really stood out to me. The price of the RHID project had dropped from 24,000 to 21,000. When I heard that, I was shocked. I was wondering to myself, how can this be? Am I, is this person sure of what's going on with this price? I'm sure a lot of you that watched the B O C C meeting also had this question. Why was the public not informed that the price of the RHID had dropped so dramatically, and even the name had been changed? I found this hard to believe. So after much lengthy research and digging, I discovered that the person who was speaking to the Leavenworth B O C C, turns out, was not an individual student after all, but an individual citizen expressing their own views and truths. The name of the project is still Riverbend Heights. I also learned that the price of the RHID project had dropped, but I'm sad to say not so dramatically. It went from 24 million to 21 million dollars. Not the 24,000 to 21,000 that was reported to the B O C C. So in closing, the 21 million dollars will need to be repaid to the developer over the greed-upon timeframe, and even with the generous 80/20 split that the city of Lansing is so graciously providing, USD 469 and Leavenworth County will still have to forfeit tax revenue. This statement is not my truth, it is the truth. I would like to cover, in my remaining time, I can't tell how much longer I have, about the housing survey that was put out. On page 12 of that survey, respondents' reason for dissatisfaction with current housing, "Property taxes are too high, too small of lots, also want a garage." And the most informative one for me was, "Neighborhood has stopped repairing and taking care of homes. No oversight by the city to adhere to city codes or rules. Dogs allowed to run at large and off-leash with no consequence to the city, to the owners. City needs to hire animal control and someone who will enforce the building codes." On page 13 of that survey. Respondents? Thank you, gentlemen.
No. Thanks, Juan.
Trina Gofford, 24227139th. With this housing study that was done in 2023, how was that distributed? By mail?
I think it was on the website, on the city's Facebook page, in the Lansing connection, so residents would have gotten that in the mail.
Okay, well, I'm a Lansing resident, and I didn't get it in the mail. So, and there's many more that says they did not get it. Excuse me?
No, I was just asking a little question.
Um. We have an online petition opposing the Riverbend Heights, the RHID, and to date, we have 415 signatures within a 34-day period, where the city received 157 home studies within a 37-day period. The online petition is almost three times the responses of your home study. The online signatures are about one-third of the number of people who voted in the last municipal election, and I would think that number would be important to those of you which your term ends this year. You've mentioned that your comprehensive plan is a wish list. If so, why aren't the three projects, Riverbend Heights, Delaware Ridge, and Epic Estates, already included? And what has changed? And what has changed in two years, when a City of Lansing letter was sent to Kansas City, Kansas Planning Commission concerning Delaware Ridge, stating that storage units were not supported within city limits, and future land use didn't support self-storage in a single-family residential development? Has anything changed? Or you guys are able...
There was no sewer in that location before, so any development near it would have been on two and a half acres, whereas when the sewer is there, you can do more development. Everything without sewer is on two and a half acres. That wouldn't be supported by the city's master plan.
Okay. So when those things happen, sewers installed and all of that, you can just change from your comprehensive plan on the whim? You don't have to follow that? But we're expected to follow your rules, ordinance, et cetera?
The comprehensive plan is a guide.
Why do you call it a wish list?
We did not. Planning Commission did. We did not.
Josh has called it a wish list. Is Josh here tonight? No. Just curious. Thank you.
Good evening. How are you fine folks? I've never been here before, but my name is Daniel Page. I live on 1101 Sycamore Ridge Drive. I would just like to say, you know, my knowledge of this project is much more limited than it ought to be, and I plan to do some more research about it. But my big concern about this whole thing has been how not widely distributed the information about it has been. Because I, you know, I admit that sometimes I'm not as civically engaged as I ought to be, and that's on me. But I know some folks that are very civically engaged, and almost nobody I talked to, in fact, I don't think one single person I asked had any idea about this. And my understanding is that the law was changed in some way to allow for smaller lot sizes. Is that correct?
And ordinance was changed, yes.
And now, is that across the whole city of Lansing?
Yes.
Yes.
That is a very significant change in the character and nature of housing developments within the city. The reason that those lot sizes exist is so that the city will have a certain appearance in all areas. And when you change something like that, even just to allow that to be done, I would think that there should be a lot of buy-in from the community on that. And I wasn't even aware that that had happened, and that was just the precursor to this deal here, to allow it to happen. So I think that there's been a lot of background work going on to set this deal up, where laws were changed, that the people didn't really have the opportunity because they didn't know about it, because it was not made widely known. And I don't think, I think that if you were to put it to a vote, I don't think that that would have passed. And I understand that's not practical, and it's not required to put everything to a public vote, but I don't think for a second that that would have passed. And I, and I'm just, it's not an indictment of anybody here, I'm not upset with anybody. But I think that it is incumbent to make sure that the people are well aware of serious changes like that. I mean, I know every little nitty-gritty piece of policy, you know, most people probably don't need to care about, but something that significant is massive, and people really should be informed. Because, you know, the city is its people, and the people should be, broadly speaking, in charge of what's going on or significant changes like that. And the last thing is, I just want to make sure, I don't know, is, has there been very much coordination or speaking with the people who live kind of in the rural area right across, it's a little dirt road that runs behind it, by there that Mr. John here lives on? Because that's a massive change to the character of that area as well. And I just want to make sure that our city is not doing a cruelty to the people in the county by, you know, I don't know what it's going to look like, or how much they'll be able to see, or how it's going to impact them. I just want to make sure that there's a proper, I don't know if it's an impact study or what it is, made, done to make sure that their property value isn't damaged, and that the way that they're able to live their lives is not impacted in a major way. That's all. Thank you very much.
All said. Appreciate it.
My name is Jeanette Labey-Holdeman. I live on the 4H Road in Lansing. I wasn't going to say anything, but I want to share information that I have recently learned. I mean, this is an important subject matter for everybody. There's an awful lot of emotions involved in this, and I had the opportunity to go to the LCDC luncheon, which was held in Togonoxi. And Togonoxi has four such projects, RHID projects, running right now. They are growing exponentially. It's quite amazing the amount of embracing that that city is taking to the opportunity to grow. There, I asked specifically, there was no complaints from the school district, which I found really kind of interesting when you've got four big projects going at the same time. I think we all need to step back a little bit. The city cannot grow if we don't look at variations for housing. I don't know about your daughters. I have great-grandchildren, but I'll tell you, my children probably can't afford to come back and live here. They would not if they hadn't bought houses much earlier. There is nowhere for a small family to be in. There aren't small enough houses. I would encourage you to go to Togonoxi and look at the small houses that are being built there. They are really nice houses. They are two, three-bedroom, two full bathrooms. They have a small yard with a six-foot fence around it, because young people don't want to do yard work. I don't want to do yard work, and young people don't either. I really would encourage a little bit more open-mindedness into looking to see what could be done, what positively could be done to improve our area. I mean, I don't want a ton of little houses. I know, I'm looking at you, sir.
You're supposed to be addressing, didn't you?
I know.
Yeah, you're not in the deal here.
They do not. I'm just, yeah, but they probably understand what I'm saying because maybe they've outreached or been into some of these situations. I really feel there is a lack of information, true, but people have to do a lot of the research on their own. They have to figure out the fact that young people do not want to live in huge houses with five bedrooms. They don't want yard work. They don't want a lot of the things that these smaller subdivisions will offer. They have HOAs. It's $250 a year to make sure your local mechanic doesn't open up a business right on the driveway. They have some really good opportunities there. Please go out there and look at this before completely mixing everything. Because I feel we are missing an opportunity here to grow. We have not had any house starts. They have 50 house starts that they're trying to work on in Togonoxi. I know they're on 2440, but I still think this end of town has a better opportunity than the north end of Lansing to grow. Thank you.
Personally, I didn't appreciate that. I would appreciate that if we had had an opportunity earlier, okay? Last fall, last summer, the Engelharts, oh, I'm sorry, Janie Stockman, you remember Janie with an N. Janie Stockman, 24314, 131st.
Thank you.
Okay. Engelharts were talking with us about John buying the back half and us buying the front half of their property. How in the world did this happen this fast? Since last fall, when we were talking with the Engelharts, I sat on the porch of her rental house over there, and suddenly this came up, and it was rammed down our throats, and I'm really trying to understand, and I understand, I'm sorry, I'm getting a little absorbed here, how this body, without more input from the citizens, has a right. I mean, I know you have the right, and I know your hearts are right. I don't doubt that one little bit. But why have we not been allowed to have input? What is the rush? What's rush? Why do we have to hurry? Why can't we have public forums? I don't understand, and that's the true statement. What I do is understand, if you remember back when you were a child, and you'd see a great big present under the tree, and you'd be so excited, or if you're in a gift exchange, you would draw yourself toward that big box with a big ribbon on it. And what if we open it up and there's nothing in there, or worse, it's Pandora's Box? Because we, the people, have not had an opportunity to look into this. And if your statement is right, ma'am, what's the problem with putting this out to where the public really knows? Where are all the citizens that are in favor of this? You don't live even close to it. I live on that gravel road, where there are going to be 15, 15 houses made right across the street from me, where now it's not, it's not. It's just beautiful landscaping, and I understand I have no right to keep Mrs. Engelhardt from selling her property. But I know this happened awfully fast, and someone came in, and it is a cost to the school district. We're not going to have the revenue for all these students that don't have to pay any taxes. The rest of our taxes will go up, and I know you will annex me because I'm on that street. I understand that. I'm asking you sincerely, if you're going to table this to May 1st, why can't you table the whole project for a little while and give the Lansing people some time to digest and understand exactly what's happening to us? I don't know how many of you people live right there. We do have a whole bunch more houses already coming in on the north side of McIntyre. Why can't we see how that all goes, how that transpires? Why? What is this rush? When we're not going to be making, you're not going to make any money off of them. Who's going to make money off this project? Anybody in this room? Any of you guys? Are you really making any money off of it? Or is it just an industrious idea? But I'm not against industrious ideas. What is the rush? So anyway, I'm asking you to rethink this, give it some time. What's the rush? Let's see how things go, and if you can have more public support. Because, you know, honestly, the votes will be coming, and we, the citizens, will be campaigning one of these days. And I don't say that as, I say that as an honest heart that says, give us some time to digest and understand. There's nothing wrong with that. Thank you. I appreciate it. I'm sorry that I was a little...
Thank you.
So even nice Janie can get herself...
I live at 31891, 159th Street in Leavenworth County, and I own a home in the Lansing School District. Those of you that know me know I'm a numbers person. So I did my own research, and I asked Google, the average number of children in a home in Kansas. Did that this afternoon. The average number of children per family in the United States, it couldn't give me Kansas, so I said, in the United States in 2023 was approximately 1.94. This number is slightly lower than the national average, but it doesn't appear that there's specific data available for Kansas alone. Well, the other night, I attended Lansing School Board meeting. There were some slides put up, real small print, you couldn't read the numbers. I was even sitting close. But one of the things that the attorney said is, one, are .5 student per household. If we're doing 417, .5 is 208 students. Well, .5 and 1.94 are miles apart. That's a major difference on our school district. That doesn't even take into account the other developments, but at least the other developments are going to be paying taxes. So I have concerns about the numbers. I am more than willing to sit down with the developer. I don't think you should take their numbers at face value, what they're flashing up on the screen real quickly, because they may or may not be legit. They sound good. I heard some people talking at the school board meeting the other night. Well, they were taking this year Millevy and comparing it to this, and they were mixing apples and oranges. I don't know. I haven't seen the numbers. I have nothing I can compare it to. But then my next question is, who is our targeted residence? If it's the people that are the biggest employers in Lansing, they can't afford a $300,000 or $400,000 home. The starting pay at KSP is $22 an hour. For 80 hours, a two-week timeframe, that'd be $1,760 before you take out taxes, retirement, that kind of stuff. After you take all that out, you're going to get down to about $1,200, $1,300. A $300,000 home at 6.5%, which is the current interest rate, would be over $2,500 when you add in taxes and insurance and an HOA. So the take-home for a prison guard, it would take 100% of their take-home to make the mortgage payment. Nothing left to live on. KSP is our largest employer and would fall behind the school district. So we need to look, if we're saying affordable homes, affordable for who? It's not the people who are living, are working here. And I just have concerns about taking money from what should be going to the school district and giving that to a developer. So thank you.
Thanks, Betty. Are you coming up? You weren't? Okay.
Hi, I'm Rebecca. I live at 13883 McIntyre. I just have a quick question, and then I can bother you guys at the next meeting. I don't, like, who paid for this housing study?
The city did.
The city did? You guys paid for it? Okay. I just wanted to clarify that real quick.
My name's Chuck Irwin. I live at 2824...
I don't even know his name.
24282, 126th Street. I'll be real quick. I just want to make two statements. I know that if we go through with this, of these projects, two things are going to happen. My taxes are going to go up, my value of my property is going to go down, along with everybody else that lives in this area. Would you be for that? I'm not for that. I don't understand, you know, my taxes, I've been here seven years, and my taxes have almost doubled, and this is going to make it go up higher. Why? Who would be for that? Thank you.
There's no other takers? We will make a motion to continue the public hearing to 1 May.
We'll move.
Second.
Have a motion and a second to continue the public hearing to the 1 May City Council Hall roll.
Mr. Clemens?
Yes.
Mr. Gardner?
Yes.
Mr. Kirby?
Yes.
Mr. Kowalski?
Yes.
Mr. Garvey?
Yes.
Mr. Robinson?
Yes.
Motion passed. Thank you. Item number four is Charter Ordinance 1-2025, Reinvestment Housing Incentive District. This charter ordinance is needed to ensure the city can utilize Home Rule powers to address local housing needs more flexibly. By exempting the city from the provisions of KSA 125250, the ordinance allows the city to establish an RHID with terms better suited to the city's specific housing goals. In an upcoming proposal, this ordinance would allow the city to allocate 20% of the new tax generated to all taxing entities, the city, the school, and the county, instead of capturing all 100% of these taxes to the developer. If you don't opt out of this and have your own charter ordinance, you don't have any flexibility to work with the developers and say, no, we want 60% of the taxes if you're going to develop. So this gives us flexibility to do that. So I need a motion to approve and adopt Charter Ordinance 1-2025, exempting the City of Lansing, Kansas from the provisions of KSA 125250, and providing substitute and additional provisions on the same subject relating to an RHID.
We'll move.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any discussion?
This doesn't, deals everybody, right? Not just the...
Yeah, this would be anybody that we make a deal with on an RHID. Okay, call the hall.
Mr. Clemens?
Yes.
Mr. Gardner?
Yes.
Mr. Kirby?
Yes.
Mr. Kowalski?
Yes.
Mr. Garvey? Mr. Robinson?
Yes.
Mayor McNeil?
Yes. Motion passed. Item number five is Mill and Overlay Bid Approval. The bids for the 2025 Mill and Overlay Program were opened and read aloud on April 10, 2025. Public Works recommends accepting the bids from J.M. Fahy. Is it Fahy?
Fahy.
Fahy? I'm sorry. Fahy, with the following combination. A base bid of $551,976.10, alternate one on 147th for $139,456, alternate number five on 155th Street for $130,972, for a total of $822,404.10. So I need a motion to accept the bids and unit prices as presented and award the 2025 Mill and Overlay Project to J.M. Fahy. I'm saying Fahy. Construction. This project will consist of the base bid and alternate one plus alternate five for $822,404.10, plus a $5 construction contingency.
5%.
Oh, 5%. What did I say?
$5.
Oh. Well, that's a little more than $5 if it's 5% of the contingency.
Yes, sir.
We'll move.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any discussion?
We have any issues with Fahy last year, Mike?
No, we did not. There was just one item, and they corrected it right away.
How many bids did you get?
On this one, we received six, six, or, yes, six bids. It was our, it was one of our bigger...
That's a pretty good number, isn't it?
That's a very good number. And as you can see, they're pretty, pretty consistent, so...
Or anything else? Mike? All right, we have a motion and a second. Call the roll.
Mr. Clemens?
Yes.
Mr. Gardner?
Yes.
Mr. Kirby?
Yes.
Mr. Kowalski?
Yes.
Mr. Garvey?
Yes.
Mr. Robinson?
Yes.
Motion passed. Item number six is Bid Approval for Seasoned Right-of-Way Mowing. The bids for the seasonal row program were opened and read out loud on April 9, 2025. The mowing area is defined as 12.5 acres, primarily along Main Street. I need a motion to award the 2025 seasonal row mowing contract to Personal Touch Lawn Services in the amount of $425 per mow along the subsequent following-year price.
We'll move.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any discussion on this one?
Yeah, I was just, one's going to ask, explain the subsequent following-year pricing.
It's a three-year contract, and it goes up.
Yeah, they, if you look in the, if you look in the agenda item, they, every, every time we bid this, we allow them a offset for the follow-on years, and we reserve that as an option. For instance, our previous vendor, we executed their options. They did a great job, and that's how we just exercise that option. So their, their bid was 425 with a 2.7% increase as part of their bid. And then at the end of each season, we basically, if they've done a good job, we will offer them a continuation.
So the 2.7 is like a cost of living?
That's, that is, yes, that's their seasonal adjustment that they included in their bid document.
Thank you.
The number seems really low compared to everybody else's numbers. Why is that?
I actually had multiple email conversations and rode around in the truck with the vendor to make sure that he clearly understood the scope of work. He did so, he did so in writing, and he did sign the contract. Capitalism, is the best I can say.
What happens if he's in over his head, decides not to do the work?
Well, we do have a provision in the contract where we can solicit from the next vendor, and there is an out for both parties. That did cross our minds.
Okay, anyone else? All right, thanks, Mike. We have a motion and a second. Call the roll.
Mr. Clemens?
Yes.
Mr. Gardner?
Yes.
Mr. Kirby?
Yes.
Mr. Kowalski?
Yes.
Mr. Garvey?
Yes.
Mr. Robinson?
Yes.
Motion passed. Reports. Any department heads? Nope. City Attorney?
Other reporter.
City Administrator, Tim. And this monitor is killing.
I have a few things. I'll try to get you guys out of here by 8:30. First off, I think you guys might remember maybe a year and a half ago, there was a petition from residents to ask you guys to stop private property owners from cutting down trees in fairway estates. We have no authority over if a person on private property cuts down trees on their own land. But the person facilitating that petition wanted to let you guys know that it's still being circulated. Again, we really don't have any legal right to stop someone from cutting down a tree on their own private property, so... But I did want to mention that to you guys.
Quite a right-of-way along there, though, right? The easement area.
Along the walking trail. Yeah, along the walking trail, we generally have 10 feet on each side. Generally, it veers a little bit. The one thing that I will tell you guys, though, you know, we took a lot of our staff out there to look at that, and a lot of the trees that are in that 10-foot right-of-way are kind of, you know, what you'd call them, like scrub trees. You know, it's not like they're these beautiful oak, maple trees or anything like that. They're not the type of trees you'd plant in your front yard, so... Obviously, any type of tree that is mature and nice-looking, we would encourage the property owner to keep that. But again, what people do on their own private property, we are limited by. But the resident asked that we pass that along, so I wanted to mention that to you guys, too.
Tim?
Yes.
Questioning that, since you brought up the trees and the trail at the same time.
Yeah.
Did the pre-committee look at the ones that were cut down by the condo tails as far as getting them replaced since they are on our property?
Staff did. They're on city property, but they're in an electrical easement. So that was Evergy who cut them down, so...
Are we going to replace them with anything? I know that Evergy made recommendations of the types.
I mean, we could replant them. It's possible Evergy would cut them down again at some point, though, if it's in their easement, so... But that was, that was who cut them down, so...
Yeah, I understand. Thank you.
Yeah. I also had some ideas from residents that they wanted me to throw this out to you. No action really required tonight, but they did ask me to pass this on to you. I had one resident in Wyndham who wanted us to change the times of fireworks, I think on the first, second, and third of July, to stop them at 9:00 PM. I had mentioned at 9:00 PM in July, sometimes it's still pretty light out.
Not even dark, right?
Yeah, but...
It used to be 9:00 PM when we changed it.
Okay, yeah.
Years ago, because people said, "It's not even dark enough, you can't shoot nightworks."
And I had mentioned that. It was interesting, the correspondence with him. He seems okay with the fireworks being later on the Fourth of July. His main question was doing it at 9:00 PM on the days before the Fourth. So I told him I would pass that along, and if you guys want to consider that or bring that up at a future meeting, you can. I think another thing that came up, and this one we might need, we might need to think about it a little bit faster. But we did have a resident throw out the idea of a senior discount for the pool. We don't currently have that in our fee structure, but that was another idea that was, that was thrown out there. So again, something that we can kind of think about for the future if we want to do something like that, so... One bit of really exciting news. Our city clerk, Tish Sims, just today received notification that she received her Master Municipal Clerk certification. That has been years and years and years in the making, so we're really proud of Tish. She's been a city clerk for over a decade, and an assistant city clerk before that on both sides of the Kansas and Missouri border, so... Just really proud of Tish, her dedication, her willingness to continue her education, so congratulations on that. And then just to clarify a couple of other things, too, because again, I, you know, maybe, maybe I, I need to do a better job educating people, and we did ask our bond counsel to attend tonight, too, in case there's any questions legally or procedurally about the RHID. On a project like that, the developer fronts millions of dollars to install all of the infrastructure, and he's paid back over the course of years and years and years with the property taxes. So, you know, if, if the houses don't sell, if the lots don't sell, he's out millions and millions of dollars, so...
I think that needs to be cleared up. If it's going on out there, that if for some reason he fails, the city's on the hook, and that's not true.
Yeah, that, nothing could be further from the truth. If he doesn't sell the houses, he's out millions of dollars. So that's, that's one clarification that I do want to mention.
That's not a Facebook thing, that's here. That's coming from here.
The other thing that's been kind of challenging, you know, we've approved rezones, but there's not one other housing development going on in Lansing right now. Like, we've approved a rezone for Eptic Estates and Delaware Ridge, but we haven't received any definitive plans for either of those. So when people are saying there's going to be 3,000 houses in a year, or two years, or three years, nothing could be further from the truth. The Delaware Ridge developer is looking at doing 50 to 60 houses a year. So when people are saying things that are just outright false, you know, I, I don't know if they're genuinely, just genuinely incorrect or what the deal is, but, but there's no other subdivisions going on in Lansing right now. You guys know how many new houses we have built the previous two years? Four. We have four houses built in two years.
And I live in one of them.
You live in one of them. So I mean, we...
Those four are on the same block.
We are falling behind so much in new housing development. And one member on the school board did call me a few weeks ago and was asking me about this. And I told her, you know, if we had somebody building 100 homes a year, we wouldn't have done this. If we had the type of growth and development that Baser does, we wouldn't have done this. We're doing this because we have two houses being built a year. So I, I just wanted to clear a couple of those things up. But again, if there's any questions based on anything tonight, happy to answer them. If there are anything from a legal or procedural standpoint, we have Kevin and Chanel from Gilmore and Bell, our bond counsel. So I did want to extend that to you.
Since you, since you offered RHID, let's say theoretically we make it a 10-year period, and they do not recoup their costs within that 10 years. Are they out anything that they haven't done at the 10-year mark?
The city would not be out anything, no.
Okay. So that's, that's one that I was told that we're going to have to take out a bond to buy it out.
We're not issuing any type of debt or bond or any, that's 100% false.
Okay. I just wanted...
Yeah, no, I know, I know you're aware of that.
I just wanted to make it sure that everyone understands that. And what they call infrastructure is coordinated and agreed upon from the developer and the city. They don't just get to put whatever they want.
Correct.
And that's one of the reasons for the reduction in the cost is because we went over their list of what they considered infrastructure, and it didn't meet with our explanation of what infrastructure was. So that's where the reduction came in. So it's agreed upon, it's just not whatever the developer puts in on there. The city has to say, "Yes, this is infrastructure." And a lot of that stuff, we would be paying for as a city to get the infrastructure to their lots, correct?
Correct.
So, so they're including stuff that the city would have had to build anyway to get the lot buildable.
And one thing that I want to clarify, too, because I...
Hey, let's, this isn't going to be an all-night RHID one-way conversation.
Well, I'm just trying to address some of the questions that were brought up.
I got it.
I understand.
I'm just saying, when you have your time to talk, you can talk RHID, but I don't want it to just be going around.
Well, I just wanted to say one more thing, too, because you, you did spark something in my mind, because words matter. When people say we're taking $7 or $8 million from other government entities, that's under the assumption that the subdivision would take place without any incentives. And I'm here to tell you it won't. Based on two houses a year for the last two years, no one's going to build a subdivision like this. So when, when people say that, that's under the assumption that the subdivision would be built without the RHID program, and it would not be. So that, just wanted to address some of the things that were said.
Yeah. No, no problem. Okay. We'll go around the horn, then. Dan, you're first, since you, you're ready to talk.
All right. Had Port Authority on, on Tuesday, and packet was sent out. And at the Port Authority, Senator Climp was there, and like what was announced at the Board of County Commissioners, I think it was two or three weeks ago, just to let the public know, it'll be in the connections and also put an article in Leavenworth Times for those people that don't get the connections. The state is looking at some prison property to allow the, the county to use it as a railhead to spur building on industrial commercial. It's on North 5. It's not in your township. It's in the city, city limits already, and it's on North Highway 5. The ink hadn't been put to paper, and about what I just said is about all I know. Until it's been approved and they put together a committee to look at it and do studies, that's all I know. Just so you're aware that the discussion's going on. That's the only purpose of me putting it up. And I want to thank the citizens for coming up and talking. Your opinions do matter, and, and I do appreciate it. I may not agree with all of them, you may not agree with everything that I feel, but I do appreciate the conversation. And Tish, even if you don't want it public, congratulations. That's everything I've got, Mayor.
Thanks, Dan. Kevin?
Yes, congratulations, Tish. And that's all I have for tonight.
All right, thanks, Kevin. Gene?
I have one question. On this RHID, sorry, one question. School board or county have the option to not participate. If they don't want to do this, they don't have to do this. So they're not being made by the city to do anything they don't want to do.
Okay.
Okay. Thanks, Gene. Jake?
Yeah, just congrats to Tish. And I want to echo what Dan says. It's not easy to get up here and voice an opinion that might deviate from somebody else, so we do appreciate the public coming in.
All right, thanks, Jake. Jesse?
Congratulations, Tish.
Thank you.
Good job. Sometimes it's hard to sit up here, and I always say this the right way and not offend anybody. It's hard to sit up here and listen to some comments when they're false and accurate and keep my mouth shut and not call, interrupt you and call you out. So I apologize if I'm making a face and, you know, getting aggravated when I hear comments that are not accurate. McIntyre wrote improvements from a couple of years ago. City of Lansing had almost nothing to do with that, but I keep hearing that come up again and again and again. That was a county project, not a city project. Just, I mean, when you come up to speak, please, please be accurate in your statements and that know, have the correct information. That's all I'm asking. But I appreciate everybody showing up and giving their opinion, though, at the same time. Tim? You're doing a great job. I appreciate everything you do for the city. Thank you. That's it.
All right, thanks, Jesse. Pete, you're last.
Just want to say thanks, Tish, for everything that you do for our city. Amazing achievement. Thank you for doing that. It leads me into some other discussion. My family and I went for a walk, and we're going down some of the trails, and they're so beautifully manicured. It just stands out to me what a great city Lansing is and what an honor it is to live here. We are all in this community together, and sometimes we don't always agree, but it's important that, that we all share each other's thoughts. And I think the people that came up the last few meetings, they've done that. They've shared their beliefs and how they feel about different things. And like Mr. Clemens said, I may not always agree with you, but I do listen to you and I'm hearing you, so thank you. And with that, I make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Have a motion and a second to adjourn. Call roll.
Mr. Clemens?
Yes.
Mr. Gardner?
Yes.
Mr. Kirby?
Yes.
Mr. Kowalski?
Yes.
Mr. Garvey?
Yes.
Mr. Robinson?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.